The September 20th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we provide an opportunity for residents to address the council on issues related to Eden Prairie City government. These are typically held on the first and third Tuesdays of the month, which is when we have our meetings. And the time period is 6:30 to 6:55. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. If time permits after scheduled speakers are finished, we will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised, and if you have any questions, please contact the city manager's office. The first thing we have on the agenda tonight is an Award of Excellence from the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association for the Staring Lake Observatory. The Eden Prairie Park and Rec Department has been selected to receive an Award of Excellence from the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association. This award is given for 2010 projects. Amy Peterson, an awards committee member, and I understand resident of Eden Prairie, will present this Award of Excellence to the Eden Prairie City Council and city staff at this meeting for work at the Staring Lake Observatory. Amy.
Good evening. Mayor Tyra Lukens and council members, thank you for having me here tonight. It is an honor as an Eden Prairie resident and as a recreation professional to present this award tonight on behalf of the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association. But before I do that, I just want to give you guys a little background on the Minnesota Park and Recreation Association, and just to give you a little background on us. It was formed in 1937 to foster the growth and development of the parks and recreation profession throughout the state. Presently, we have nearly 900 professional, corporate, board commission, student, and retired members throughout the state. Members of the Association cover municipal, county, state, district, commercial, and private agencies. The Minnesota Recreation and Park Association office is located in front of you. The MRPA Awards Committee was created in 1987 with the purpose of acknowledging individual members and agencies for their excellence in the fields of parks, recreation, and leisure services. Awards Committee members represents a cross-section of association members from the state of Minnesota. The Awards Committee feels it is very important to increase awareness and the appreciation for the excellent parks, trails, facilities, recreation programs, and services that are occurring in our state of Minnesota. That is why the Awards of Excellence was created. MRPA members may nominate a project for an Award of Excellence in seven different categories: park and facility, programming and events, sustainability, communication, administrative or management strategies, volunteer initiatives, and sponsorship and partnerships. Nominations received are then reviewed, evaluated, and scored by awards committee members. It's not an easy job. Only the top-scoring nominations are selected to receive the Awards of Excellence. It is, this is a very distinguishing award, the Minnesota Rec and Park Association. We do, we do take a lot of pride in the projects hereby, the recreation professions here, professionals here in our state. So with that, I would like to welcome Jay Lotthammer to come on up, Stuart Fox, who is a nominator of the project. And if I could have Mayor Tyra Lukens come on up. Amazing how you get a little nervous and get up here. And I do, I'd like to present the Award of Excellence for our Staring Lake Observatory project. With this, here you go. Thank you very much.
Your Honor, council members, I take this opportunity to show you just a little bit of background about the observatory and to talk you through where we are today and where we came from. So if I could go to the presentation, we've got a lot of photos. This is a pretty photogenic project. This is a picture of the telescope, as you see it on the deck. It was a gift from the Minnesota Astronomical Society, and it's described as about twice as big as your home water heater. And that's true for those of you who have been there and seen it. Came to us in 2006, but it really didn't have a home for where it needed to go. Originated, University of Minnesota Duluth before it moved on, and so it's had some travels around the state, was out in Norwood, Young America, and then came to us. Sixteen feet, sixteen-inch diameter, nine feet long. It's one of the largest in the state of Minnesota. And one of the things that our challenge was is to figure out a way to house it. It needs to be on a very stable base because of how sensitive it is to movement. And so we were fortunate to meet the Coors family, who donated $125,000 towards the building of the observatory. And we had another couple from, family from Eden Prairie who wanted to remain anonymous and donated $10,000 towards the building of the structure. The building ends up looking like that down at Staring Lake, and blends in well with the shoreline and with the outdoor center, has kind of the same colors and same stain and wood look from across the lake, so I think it fits in well. It's a good spot because we also have the outdoor center there to really be the hub of the instructional part of it. And if the weather isn't good, we have the technology that was donated to us that simulates what you would see in the Eden Prairie sky on that night. And we also have the capability, when it is nice, that we can hook up to the actual eyepiece. Most telescopes, only one person at a time could look through, but we have the capability also to be able to project that on a screen, what you're actually seeing right there at the telescope. So it can accommodate quite a few people all at one time. Just going back to the, to the presentation, it was a challenge to build. It was a site that was a very mucky site. We had some huge structural challenges. And the concept, really, I think, was designed somewhere between three and four o'clock in the morning. Stu Fox and I would come to work as we were trying to figure this out, and at eight o'clock in the morning, we would see each other. And it was a pen and a notebook that started us going like this. And then it was kind of a barn door concept in order to be able to look out the front but still have a wall. But then we had a roof that was kind of floating, and it couldn't really touch anything. So then we thought about the doorstops with the brushes on the bottom usually. Well, we said, what if we put the brushes on the, on the ceiling, and that would form the place to keep the weather out in the weather tight. And so thankfully, though, we were smart enough to turn this over to some very intelligent structural engineers and architects. And, you know, for having really old-time barn door kind of technology to this that a lot of farmers probably would have used, there is a lot of science and a lot of structural engineering that went into the design of this in order to be able to have a snow load in Minnesota, because this, we're not in New Mexico where a lot of observatory buildings are, to maintain that snow load and melt it off and still have it open in the wintertime, which is a great time in Minnesota for astronomy. We, we have a really kind of state-of-the-art building in a, in a very high-tech scenario. We have seen quite a bit of use. We had the grand opening about a year ago. Shows pictures of the deck that was built by our park maintenance staff. The observatory, you can see how the roof rotates. It actually comes right off, the top stays in one corner on a pivot, and that pivot is a very, very strong pivot because it can't, it can't have any flex in it in order to make that roof stay at a constant height. You see the grand opening approximately a year ago. We have had things like open scope nights and also our Star Watch program. We've always had an astronomy program down at the outdoor center, but this really expands it. And we're very thankful for a group of volunteers, astronomers, that come and help us out. They're some of the most passionate people about sharing astronomy and science and space with both kids and adults, so we're very fortunate for that. We are about to take on our one-year anniversary, October 21st, 7:30. It's free, and we'd invite you and all the residents to come out and be able to witness this telescope. And the grand opening night, we had a couple hundred people that were there to look through it, but we could have even more on, on this night, and we're, we're well set and well ready for that. So we really owe a lot of thanks to the people who gave funds to it. Thanks for the support from the council to help us see this project through, and I think we're seeing the fruition of this, really being well-accepted and used by the public. And again, thanks to Stu Fox for all of his work on this project. This was one of the more difficult and complex projects for basically being a very small building that I think any of us professionally have taken on, so he did a great job of shepherding it through. So thank you, and we are glad to receive the award and glad to be recognized by the MRPA. We are also recognized by, I'll have to go back on the slide so I can show you and get it right here. Stu, the name of the group?
It's National Structural Engineers Award.
National Structural Engineers Award. It was submitted for their, and it's currently going through a process of even greater level of award that they go through, but it is one, one of their recognized awards, too. Good project.
Thank you, Mr. Lotthammer.
Thank you.
The anniversary on the 21st, do you need to sign up? It's free, I saw, but you don't, just drop in. Okay, thank you. And thank you so much to the MRPA for giving us that award. It's really a unique thing for a city like ours to have an observatory, and it's a wonderful asset to our community. And I'd like to also thank, at this time, Park and Rec members. I know that some of our commission members are here, and they work hard to make this a wonderful place to recreate and enjoy nature and enjoy the stars, so thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add or change?
Mayor and council, yes. I have an item to add under report as city manager, which would be Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission update.
Okay.
And then we have an item to remove under the report of the community development director. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to consider the purchase agreement for the extra piece of property on, near Dell Station, so we want to work some more issues out with the buyer and hopefully bring that item back at the next meeting in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes? I have something that I'd like to add at reports of council members, but it'll be very brief. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of minutes from our council workshop that was held on Tuesday, September 6?
Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held the same night.
So moved.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Brings us to our consent calendar. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? The only thing that I would like to add is, one of the items on there is for the Burchell Woods Conservation Area pavement. And I'm in favor of it, but some issues are brought to our attention from public over the last few days about some of the misuse of that facility, or not the facility, but of the land there. And I'd just like to get some follow-up and some report back in the near future about how we're going to address some of those issues. Okay. All right. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Motion passes. First public hearing is United Health Group. Mr. Getchel.
Mayor and city council, United Health Group is before us tonight for a request for a planned unit development concept review on 71 acres, a planned unit development district review with waivers, and a zoning district change from rural to office on 68 acres, site plan review on 68 acres, and a preliminary plat of 68 acres into one lot. We have tonight with us the, a group here from United Health Group to provide a presentation on the project, one of which we've had at this meeting previous and will have at future meetings because it is a very large project on a large piece of land in our community. So I'd like to welcome up Dennis Spala with United Health for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Getchel. Madam Mayor, members of the city council and staff, for the record, my name is Dennis Spala with United Health Group, 9900 Brenne Road. I will be brief, and thank you once again for this opportunity, and also congratulations on a great award to Mr. Lotthammer and, and the city itself. I hope someday we're up here to accept another kind, similar kind of engineering award with you on something a little larger. First of all, as I said, thanks again for this opportunity. Where we've been, we have taken some very measured steps as we promised to do in the journey. Your staff has been working long hours, as you probably have heard, and have collaborated very well with our team of subject matter experts. We have adapted, we think, we believe, to all the city requirements. We have met with the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District and continue to do so in resolution of some of the most sensitive environmental concerns that they have and we have and you have and we share as three different entities working for the same goals. We have together produced, we believe, a very constructible design and a project that we will all be proud of for decades. Where are we going? This is a good time to build, a good time to hire, to create jobs, to create value, to be efficient, to support the community, the schools, the infrastructure, and to optimize space for our employees who can increase their operating efficiency and help people live healthier lives, which, as you know, is our mission. This project has many projects within it. It is inextricably bound up in bolstering the infrastructure with you. If approved, we may start before you start on public works and public right-of-way improvements. We will be investing in both public and private projects throughout all three phases and all four buildings and ramps. Each piece of our mutual projects must be delivered on time to produce the development mosaic we both seek in this project. In essence, we are your partners in progress. Lastly, how will we get, we together get, to where we together need to be? The next steps include final approval of a plat, the PUD rezoning, and a development agreement still in progress, leading to a series of permits to start work on the site. We are ready, if you are prepared, for those foundational next steps. Tonight, we have representatives from HGA and Westwood Engineering to make a presentation, and it's probably a little different, Mr. Getchel, from what you've seen in the past or may have heard or read about in the past, because we have made some improvements, and as we said, we have been working with staff and the watershed. So we think it's an improvement based on all your comments and staff comments and comments from planning commission and council, so we'll let them present, and we'll stand by for questions and comments at, at your behest. Thank you.
We have a short slideshow that we can run through and talk about the highlights of the development and the goals for the new campus for UHG. What drove the design and the passion of what creates the environment that will be there is the site, its natural beauty. These are photos that are taken of the site that show it in all of its beauty and all of the potential that it has, and it's our goal to really weave the design and all of the development into the natural beauty and preserve as much of that integrity as we can. One of the key assets that's on the site is highlighted here in the southeast corner. There's a 15-acre portion of the site that is going to be land-banked as a conservation area, dedicated. And there's a necklace of wetlands that move through the site that are another aspect of the natural beauty that drives a lot of the decisions that were made to really leverage and, and make the most of the natural beauty of the site and how it relates to the structures that will be brought there. And together with the rest of the development as well, all of the open space works together to really create a beautiful setting. The site itself is a multiple series of buildings that will be built in three phases. On the left side is the first phase of Ramp A and Towers 1 and 2. Both those buildings are eight stories tall. The second phase is intended to be the parking structure labeled Ramp B that's on the south side of the diagram, together with Tower number 3. That's going to be a 15-story tower. And then the last phase, which gets closer to the LRT on the east side of the site, is our third phase, the fourth tower, and another parking structure that joins that. Project is bound on the left side, on the west, by Shady Oak Road, and on the south side by City Parkway, and on the north by the crosstown, Highway 62 and West 62nd Street. Those are the bounding properties. So this is what really defines the character and shape of the site and the, and the development that comes along. Some of the changes that have been made as we've been responding and working closely with all of the authorities, having jurisdiction, and the city and your planners, one of them is the modification of the intersection of, of City West and the North-South Road that will be added into the, to the site for access to the development. That has become a roundabout. Another change that has been made, which is very responsive in how we've been adapting to the input and feedback we've been receiving, is a reshaping of the Phase 2 parking structure, the parking ramp titled Ramp B. That, that building has taken, taken on a very different shape in accommodating some of the needs that we've been receiving in our conversations with, with the city and some of the local authorities. Just some details about the direction we would see the site going with some of the assets that'll be a part of the development, its relationship to the water's edge, and preserving a lot of the open space and the beauty of the landscape. That large photo in the center especially has been a very inspiring component of the landscape and trying to maintain those kinds of qualities. Another part of the project that's going to be very interesting and I think advantageous for the neighborhood is, is a circuit of, of trails that are serving the UHG employees on a day-to-day basis, as they might take a break during lunch. But also, you'll notice that kind of circumventing the site is a network of sidewalks that'll be a part of, of access around the site for those that may be working their way toward the LRT, and especially this one that is in the plans is a study for how to accommodate from City West a network sidewalk that would go through the site and make access through the LRT itself. I've been mentioning the LRT a number of times because it's been a very important driver in the creation of this framework across the site, its connection to all of this development with the, what we hope to be, the southwest corridor coming out of the downtown area through the southwest metro, and the City West parking, or LRT stop where the big red star is on the right-hand side. And so that red line that crosses the diagram really shows how, although the development on the site is really meant to not only make a great workplace that's efficient and flexible for UHG and very beautiful, but also in the end has a strong connection and orientation to make that, that accommodation for the potential LRT coming in the future. The exterior of the building, down in front of me on the, on the panel are the exterior materials of the building. This is a view as seen from across the crosstown, looking to the south and to the west. In the full-phase build-out, the building on the left is the fourth phase, the last phase, and the building on the right is the first phase, which has two buildings. You can just see the one sticking out on the right-hand side of the image. And then the building in the center is our second phase. So a view in an elevation is looking from the north. On the west side is Phase 1, and then as Phase 2 comes along, that's the 15-story building, and then the culmination is the development on the west side of the site, which is directly adjacent to that conservation area. Little bit closer up view, our, our creation of the building as gracefully meets the ground and articulating the building so that how the building meets the sky will all be clean and covered with architectural enclosures that prevent the elevators and items that usually stick up off the top of office buildings, to really care for what the building looks like in the landscape and especially how it meets the sky. A study image of what our entry courtyard might be would really be the heart of the campus. This is a view looking at the Phase 1 components of the design, and you can see the materials in that image and how they relate to the real panels, the real images that are on the panel before you, in front of Miles and I. And then just a detailed look at, at a typical corner, looking up at the, the design of the building with the glass and the architectural precast. I'd like to turn it over to Miles.
The next few slides cover some of the actual details of the proposed site development, starting with, again, some of the key natural features, and as Bill mentioned, some of the most important assets of the site, in addition to the wooded area and the southeast, are the existing wetlands. And they were delineated and updated late last year, and a, and a new quality assessment was done. And basically, the findings of that, from the Watershed District standpoint, they rate them as moderate-quality wetlands based on the diversity for wildlife habitat and vegetation. And that rating actually requires a little bit higher buffering and standards for the treatment of those wetlands than the city's regulations. So as part of the PUD, we're actually attempting to conform, we are conforming to the Watershed District standards as the basis for establishing wetland buffers and buffer setbacks in accordance with the city's code. On the next slide, you can see, based on the range of colors added to the existing wetlands, areas in the darkest tones where wetland alteration will occur in order to allow transfer from some of the sensitive areas of the site, for example, the wooded areas, into a consolidated area where the bulk of the development can occur and clustered together, as Bill described, in a way that ultimately links to the LRT. Some of the replacement wetland will occur on-site as expansions of two of the existing wetland basins, the large basin, which I'll describe as being in the north-central area, and another one just to the south of the third-phase building. This slide illustrates the proposed buffers. The proposed buffers are configured to avoid the on-site trails so that there are not trails running through the buffers, so the buffers can truly do their job of protecting the wetland areas. And they are also configured to meet the Watershed District's standards for averaging and applying minimum and average dimensional standards. Part of the whole site development concept is the management of stormwater, which is a key issue and very complicated on this site, partly because of the wetlands, but also because of soil conditions and the fact that the site has actually over 100-feet grade change on it from one end to another. So the key components are the actual, existing wetland basins will be the primary location for storing stormwater runoff, but before it can be stored in those areas, it has to be treated. And then based on new Watershed District regulations, a portion of that also has to be retained on-site through infiltration. So the next three slides show, first of all, areas that will be used for treatment of stormwater management. The area in the southwest corner of the site that's indicated there, blue, is a pond that will also be picking up and treating all of the runoff from the expanded roadway for City West Parkway and for Shady Oak Road. So in addition to dealing with on-site stormwater management, we've been asked by the city, as a way of controlling costs for the project going forward, to also deal with the changes that will be a function of this site development. So we're doing that in the southwest corner, and then also two of the basins on the northern side of the site will also be treating runoff from West 62nd Street. The next level of treatment and control would be some surface areas that would be used for infiltrating stormwater runoff. That's been consolidated quite a bit from the original site concept, so right now it's being incorporated primarily along the east edge of the Ramp A area. And then finally, there are some subsurface infiltration areas, which are essentially underground galleries for infiltration, and we're currently based primarily on the location of soils that will accommodate infiltration, planning to do that under Ramps A and C. This graphic shows the locations of the roadway improvements that have been agreed to, based on consistent elements throughout, based on the track studies that have been done. The improvements are clustered around the entrances to the project from Shady, Shady Oak Road and the access from Highway 62 at the north end, and then at the south end of Shady Oak Road, associated with ax, regional access from Trunk Highway 212. There's also a series of travel demand management concerns and commitments that will be made as part of the development agreement. A couple of them are highlighted here. They'll include establishing goals to reduce PM peak hour trips. There'll also be incentives for employees to utilize transit and other methods for carpooling. car pooling and van pooling and so forth. And then finally, there'll be other elements included, such as staggered work hours, telecommuting, and other options that will help reduce those peak-hour travel demands. There's also a number of waivers that are a part of the PUD program. They kind of group into three categories. Three of them are based on transfer of density. Those include waivers for reducing setbacks in a couple of key locations, for allowing additional building height, and for allowing higher flora ratios on the part of the project that will be developed. All those things are justified by transferring density to save some of the natural features There are also some waivers requested that are a part of integrating the development into the site. Those include waivers related to wetland buffers and setbacks, again, to allow proximity between the development and some of the wetland areas. And then also, due to the size of the building footprints and total development, there's a very large tree requirement that's based on the city ordinance. In fact, it's large enough so that there's difficulty actually accommodating it onsite. So one of the other waivers is to allow for transfer of some of the value that would be implied by that to other landscape improvements that would offset trees that there really isn't room for. And then finally, there are some waivers based on signage. The signage program is based on a consolidation of what would be allowed equivalent to the location and frontages of the site. Basically, in summary, there's 194 square feet of site signage allowed. There'd be one area identification sign of 104 square feet, that's the green asterisk on the corner of Shady Oak Road and West 62nd Street. Three freestanding signs for the three main areas of the campus, the main entries, one at City West Parkway, and two on West 62nd Street. And then up to 200 square feet of signage allowed for each of the four major office That's the end of what we have.
Thanks, Bill and Miles. Well, we're ready for your questions, if you have any, or comments from anyone. Thank you.
Okay. Council, questions? Councilmember Aho.
In terms of the phases, do you have, what are your plans on the timing on those phases? Do you have any expected timeline for that?
Yes. Mayor Tierlukens and Councilmember Aho, we will be hopefully starting yet this year and finishing the first two buildings, which constitute the first phase, and the first ramp on the west side of the site, and ready for occupancy in late 2013, so not too long from now. And then we would have the next phase, the 15-story, in 2015, and the fourth building, the third phase, near the LRT, in 2016.
Great, thank you. One follow-on to that is, for the LRT ramp, especially, or the ramp closest to the LRT, would you plan to accommodate enough parking in there so that if people were wanting to park there and use that LRT, not just people that are working at UHG, but also accommodate enough parking for the users of the station?
Mayor Tierlukens and Councilmember Aho, we had not anticipated any public parking in any private lot or ramp.
Okay.
And we want to keep that separate. And we think that we would be able to do that through design without necessarily impinging on either the public land or vice versa.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
So on the light rail line, I wanted to ask staff, is what's planned here adequate for the light rail station, and ultimately, the parking that will be a piece of that light rail station? I know it looked like they were taking some of their outlots and dedicating it to light rail, rather than their site, I believe.
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, yes, we believe it is adequate. SRF did three different concepts of potential ways to accommodate the LRT station, as well as a range of parking, and we do believe that this covers what you could call the worst-case scenario, as far as the amount of parking that might be required for this station. So we are comfortable that the LRT can be accommodated within the outlot. And there was a density transfer to allow UHG to utilize other parts of the site at a higher density as kind of compensation for dedicating those outlots.
Well, it's very much appreciated that UHG is willing to work with the whole light rail project that's so important to the whole southwest part of the city, and I think you'll find a lot of your employees like it as well, but we do appreciate that.
You're welcome.
One thing that you said, instead of trees, they're going to put in some other improvements, I assume of one kind or another, I was just curious what some of those were planned.
Yes. Mayor Tierlukens and Councilmember Nelson, if I could refer to Miles Lindgren, he might be, or Bill Blansky, I'm not sure which one, they're both experts in many fields.
There was a list included in the narrative of some suggested ways of utilizing that. They tend to focus around landscape improvements and enhancements that will be able to be used by either the public on the perimeter of the site, so some of the improvements, such as the public trails along the roadways, the sidewalk, the LRT trail connection for the future, but also enhancements on the campus for those users. For example, pavement treatments in the entry area and upgraded sidewalk areas and so forth. So it would be, all of them would fall within the category of landscape enhancements, where, you know, basic site hardscape would be actually upgraded.
Ah, so we're not talking things like benches or water features, or that kind of thing?
No, not necessarily. It would be hopefully more functional than that, but visually aesthetic as well.
All right. One question I have also is, are you looking at any kind of LEED certification for this whole, you know, plan, energy efficiency, which I assume you're putting into the building just for your own bottom line? But is there any hopes of, you know, you've got all this wonderful wetland site, some of the things would lead into the LEED certification, are you going to be looking towards that?
Mayor Tierlukens and Councilmember Nelson, thank you for asking that question. We believe in sustainable design throughout our facilities, whether they're leased or owned, but now we have the chance to control these buildings by owning them and building them ourselves and designing with this great, blue-ribbon team we have. We have had one building so far that we built from scratch in Minnetoka called the UHG Center South, that is LEED gold-certified.
Congratulations.
The building under construction right next to it will be called UHG Center East, and we are seeking the highest level of LEED certification there that we can attain under the constraints of the site. We believe that we'll be able to get, at minimum, LEED certification, potentially silver with a remote chance at gold. But we were in the same position three or four years ago when Mr. Pellner joined our team and drove that project, the south building project, from middle-of-the-range to gold certification. So we seek the highest level we can get. Sometimes the site doesn't lend itself to it because of shadows and, you know, the daylighting is a key factor, but the process, administrative factors that go into LEED certification, we're all trying to generate those points on the east building right now, and we will seek the highest level of certification on each of our buildings here in Eden Prairie. We may not attain it, we can't guarantee it, as we said before, but that is always a goal, to get the highest level possible at those sites. And the people in the room with us today have been deeply involved in those in the past, so they know how to do it, and we support that as you do.
We appreciate that, because that's one of the things we're urging through, a lot of the new building coming in to both build for now and build for the future. So I appreciate that very much, and I'm glad that you're doing whatever can be done to achieve that. Also, thank you for the conservation easements that you've set up on the site.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Case.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this question's to Mr. Getchon, you can fire it out to whomever, but one of the pluses, I think, to this plan is the onsite mitigation of the small amount of presenting to wetland that you're going to fill, and it sounds like the majority of that will be onsite, but the small amount that's not onsite. I wonder, does the City of Eden Prairie still have banked any credits at our Edenville site? I realize it was originally for our own internal purposes, but we could sell to United Health, and I'm just thinking to keep all of the mitigation within the city limits of Eden Prairie would be ideal.
Your Honor, Councilmember Case, I do not believe we do have any banked credits at this point. That has not been part of a conversation since I've been on staff here, so my understanding is there are no banked credits that are remaining.
Yeah, just, could we respond?
Please.
Your Honor, and Mr. Case? As an aside, as part of preparing both the material for the city and starting the permitting process with Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, we've looked at basically two combinations of how to deal with replacement. Initially, we had worked into the plan, what we had thought would be at least one-to-one replacement on the project site, and that may be what you're referring to. As we've transitioned to a little bit higher level of wetland alteration due to the changes with the roundabout and Ramp B, we're not able to achieve one-to-one onsite any longer, but we're at about 60% of that onsite. We explored availability for off-site credits because we knew that we were going to have to do that, and we have found an adequate supply of credits available in the Savage area, basically Scott County. So they fit the watershed district's criteria for being in the same watershed, and I believe also with the proper sequency, they fit the city's criteria for replacement.
So because of two-to-one mitigation, if you're doing 60% of the one-to-one, so you're at about one-third of your required mitigation onsite, which I still find credible, or I find, let me make sure I get the right, admirable, to your credit.
Thank you.
And I think that is really wonderful, because not many developments can mitigate usually onsite at all, so I appreciate that. Is there any chance, as you pursue down the road with this project, that there might be possibilities of continuing to find other places onsite that you could expand current wetlands to possibly continue to mitigate onsite?
It may be possible. Our biggest challenge right now is trying to find infiltration area onsite, and to the extent that we're not finding infiltration area, we may be able to find additional wetland replacement area, but that's the challenge right now, is working that balance.
I appreciate you're even trying, so thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. First of all, can you go back to the map that showed trails on the site? So the black line is trail, I take it? Because on one of, on some of these sheets, it looks like this trail that runs along the south side and comes up near Ramp C just kind of stops. But here, it's showing that it connects.
I can respond to that. The trail is shown in this diagram as continuous because it is intended to lead into the LRT station area. The way the trail will occur, or how it will happen, is that at the outset, it's being supplied as not a finished trail, but as the promise to do a trail connection if and when the LRT station is completed. So we're reserving the area for the trail. We've demonstrated that it's feasible from an ADA standpoint. That was why it stops on some of the other site graphics. It leads to the area where the station will be. We've demonstrated the ADA compliance, but it is not intended to be built unless the LRT station actually occurs.
Okay, so that is the trail that's running on the right-hand side of this graph?
No, actually, that's the one that runs sort of east to west, from the area near the roundabout, along the southern edge of the property.
Oh, that's the one that won't be built unless LRT comes.
Right.
Well, you had talked about...
The same is true of the dashed one that extends to the south. That was one of two options that was looked at for a trail connection to the LRT station, and unfortunately, there's a lot of difficulty with making the connection back to City West Parkway from where that terminates, at the southern boundary of the UHG property. So that is less likely to occur, and has actually been, I think, essentially removed from consideration at this point.
Okay, I guess I'm a little confused, because I thought Mr. Spallad said that there were trails throughout the property for employees to use.
There's trails around the property, basically, along City West Parkway, along the east side of Shady Oak Road, and along the south side of West 62nd Street. Those are all public trails. There are a few trails internally that connect into those trails more directly from the buildings. Those will have a secondary function as providing exiting requirements for the buildings.
Okay.
But due to the need to preserve the wetland areas and provide the buffers, a lot of the internal trail system that was originally considered has been eliminated in order to be able to implement the buffers.
Okay, so you said that these trails that are along the bottom of this picture are going in if and when LRT comes in.
That's correct.
So are you escrowing money into an account for, how is that going to be handled?
I'm not sure if that's been finalized, any.
I'm not sure if it's been finalized, either whether in the development agreement or as a condition of approval, but we're certainly happy to accommodate that need if, I mean, it could be six or seven years that we'd have a letter of credit in the bank, so to speak.
Right, right.
But if that's what's required.
Well, I guess, you know, my larger concern is just preserving public access through the property to the LRT station, which is wonderful if you can do that. I mean, that's great. So that was my concern. I want to get back to Councilmember Nelson's question about not being able to do tree replacement, and so you're doing other landscape improvements, and I want more clarification on that, because to me, it sounded like you were replacing trees with plaza or trees with sidewalk, and to me, that's hardscape versus something green and growing, and maybe is a little contrary to what the intent of the tree replacement strategy is.
Well, I think the overall tree requirement with the size of the structures is something in the neighborhood of 52 to 5300 caliper inches of trees. Almost 4,000 caliper inches of new trees will be planted as part of the landscaping that'll be done for the site. So, you know, a large percentage of that requirement, and literally almost as much as, or as much as can reasonably be fit on the site in terms of, you know, green trees, will be included as part of the landscape plan. So there's value left, and I think that was documented in the narrative, that needs to be offset in, as you said, landscape enhancements. But we don't expect that, at least now, to be all plantings. We expect that to be other enhancements that are related to the landscape. So as you said, things like upgrades to pavement treatments that improve the appearance of the project that might not otherwise occur. So, you know...
And I'm just still stymied as to what those are, because it sounds like you would be doing a sidewalk, and you'd be doing a plaza, and what would you not be doing that you're planning to do instead?
Well, I think, for example, there's, you know, the whole turnaround area for the drop-off plaza is planned to be pavers and pattern pavers, and, you know, that might otherwise just be bituminous pavement. So it's elements like that.
Okay, I guess I still feel like that's not in keeping with the intent of the tree mitigation ordinance, but another question that I have then is related to signage waivers, because there's quite a bit of signage waiver on this, and I'm wondering how consistent this is with waivers that we've given to other buildings.
Mayor, I'll speak to the tree replacement landscaping requirements a little bit. Mayor, I'll speak to the tree replacement landscaping requirements a little bit first. We do have precedent for approving other amenities where it's difficult to get more trees and vegetation on the site. Windsor Plaza is one example that comes to mind, where we accepted fountain and other amenities on the site and connections to our public sidewalk, et cetera, in lieu of trees, because it was difficult to meet our requirements. It may be something we want to revisit as we get into these more densely developed sites around the LRT with regard to, being more specific with regard to what we may or may not accept in those trade-offs. The signage waivers, I do believe, are consistent with some of the waivers that we've issued before. I can't come up with any specific examples off the top of my head. I could certainly bring back some of that information for final, if that would be.
Well, no, your assurance that this is typical and not something out of the ordinary, that satisfies me. It's still getting back to the tree ordinance thing. There's quite a difference between Windsor Plaza and this. This is a private facility that I'm not going to just drive down their drive and see their lovely pavers, whereas Windsor is open to the public, and you drive in and go to a restaurant or do some shopping there. So the amenities are enjoyed by the public, whereas this is more of a private site. So I guess I would like to see any landscaping that's done kind of be oriented towards the portion of the site that will be more accessible to the public, the LRT area.
Yes, Mayor, we do anticipate that the public will want to walk this site. There are apartments and other office buildings in City West, and we think it's quite likely that the public will be utilizing the trails and the sidewalks and the interior of the site maybe more than UHG would, would even prefer.
Right, but again, that's if LRT comes.
Well, even without LRT, there are residents and office workers in that area that would undoubtedly walk the site if the trails were available.
But those trails aren't going to be built unless LRT comes in, is what he had said.
They're going to be phased in, so there will be new sidewalks and new trail opportunities built with each phase, and I do see that there will be public use of those.
Okay, but just for clarification, you're talking about on the perimeter of the land. You're not talking internal trails that they've shown will be built when LRT comes in. Those aren't going to be built unless LRT comes, is my understanding.
There will be internal trails built with the different phases, as well as the trails that are specific to providing access to the LRT. So there is, there really are both, but I do see that people will start walking into the site as soon as they're given the opportunity. I think we'll see public use of the site.
And that's fine with you?
Well, it's fine to the extent that they don't approach the buildings because they're high-security due to HIPAA laws and access to the buildings, and we have equipment and investment in facilities. We have our employees and their, their sense of safety and security, so not everybody can just walk up and access the building and our property. I mean, they'll probably, if people want to walk around a pond or walk under a skyway and get to somewhere with a purpose, you know, that's fine. There, you know, you really have to assess the presumed positive intent and assess the, maybe the direction they're going and, and hope that they're just out for a walk. If they're after something else and up to no good, then we'll find that out in a hurry, because we have high security around our buildings, whether they're built or not built right now, but even open sites. So we've, we've actually spent a lot of time with our, both not just planning and landscaping, but also with security, so that they're tuned in to maintaining not just the buildings and the contents and the employees within them, but, but the surrounding areas. And there's lots of good financial reasons for that, but also safety and security and creating the right atmosphere if people want to walk. I'm sure they want to feel safe and secure, too. We're not protecting them necessarily, but they, they certainly are welcome to walk through if they're walking through. If they're lingering or they think they can come in to access the cafeteria, it's probably not in the cards. That's something else. We have good food, but it's not public.
But there will not be signs going up immediately, trails for use of employees only?
Oh, I don't think we've gotten that far. I'm not sure that we ever do that. We haven't done it on our Minnetonka campus. We haven't said employees only or everybody else stay out. It's not, it's not xenophobic in that respect. It's, it's more, if you'd like to, if you'd like to get inside, apply for a job, and we'd be happy to interview you. We need, we need the good employees. We always do. Thank you.
The final question I had is the minimum parking dimensions were decreased for this, but I assume they still have the proof of parking that they need for the amount of office space, correct?
Yes, in fact, I believe that they're overparked by our standards. Last time I checked, they're more than meeting our standards.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
One other question, going back to the site improvements. There wasn't that detail, the look of like the signs and around, are there going to be, and obviously, they're the ones at the edges of your property. Are there going to be upgrades with flowers and that kind of thing, like so many of the businesses have had locally, that has upgraded some with flowering bushes and flowers and little, at those entry points, perhaps, that are clearly public areas? It's obviously a little more to maintain, but it's become sort of an Eden Prairie thing also.
Yes, Mayor Terrell Lukens and Councilmember Nelson, those edges are important to us. Those are the entries to the property and the exits as well, if people want to feel good coming in and leaving or even walking around. And that color, you know, our winter landscaping is one thing, but our, but for the other eight months of the year, we want to make sure that we have a welcome, inviting environment that is, you know, done with sustainable design again and a welcome place to work, and we hope those kinds of things, those touches of color and that, that touch of professionalism brings new people to our door, whether they're customers or employees or visitors or guests or, you know, people who just want to take a look and smell the flowers. That's fine with us. I think that the plan is not fully developed, but I think that it will be probably as inviting as, right now, we're a little under discombobulated in Minnetonka with all the street work, but if you, if you remember, if you could go there now and drive up close, and you'd see the kind of, the height of the trees and the caliber of the trees there and the flowers, even mums at this time of year, things that were summary before are gone, but Brickman is our, our national landscape vendor, and they do a great job for us in maintaining. It's probably not as extensive as it used to be in, say, five or six years ago, but we think that we have made it a lot more pointed and discreet and, and more inviting for that purpose, rather than just having flowers in different places, but having a plan and having the right perennial that come back.
Hopefully, some of the site improvements will be used in that way with upgraded flowering bushes and flowers and such around those entry points and, that are very visible pieces of the campus that I think would be in the same spirit of the trees or whatever, and, you know, would be consistent with what generally has gone with corporate building sites here.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate that. We'll keep that in mind if we haven't already logged it into Mr. Osland, who isn't here tonight. He's, he's in Ireland, I think, collecting four-leaf clovers. But anyway, Mr. Osland is in charge of our landscaping, and he does, always does a good job for us and for many other clients. Thank you.
Councilmember Case.
I guess I wanted to try to land, maybe, Your Honor, for your sake, on a little bit more clarity, and you just touched on the tree replacement piece of this again. I think, I understand, I think you and I actually served in 95, at least I was on that first tree replacement ordinance committee, and I, I feel like the intent all along was to really make whatever occurred to be environmentally significant, and I think you and maybe me a little bit and maybe others of us are having a little bit of trouble with just how, how environmental, you know, a trail is, or just the pavement itself, which actually sounds contrary to the idea of what trees maybe were to be meant for in the first place to better our environment. So I read in, in the packet last evening that you're going to try as much as possible to include impervia, or pervia, pervious surface in walkways, which would cost more money and use some of the tree replacement money for that. I think that fits philosophically what we're looking for, and I just wonder if this isn't more of a staff issue of, and maybe bringing back another day. I don't think we should argue this battle out with this project, because it's right here, but maybe a future day, talk through a little bit more, what does it look like on these projects where they can't squeeze the trees in anymore? In the old days, the 90s, we would take some of that money and bank it and use it in other projects that had no trees and, or even our parks. I mean, we have parks right now that are in bad need of trees, and we had this fund that we would move like that, and so City of Eden Prairie benefited because we got additional trees. And I have no problems taking additional tree replacement dollars and bettering your site. I think that's a great idea. I just think the philosophical part of it has to be in the original intent of what the tree replacement was in the first place, and that's just to improve and better our environment, and that's not just a perceptual aesthetic idea, it's actually an environmentally bettering proposal. And I think the pervious surface would do that and possibly some of the trails, depending on how that works. And I like your idea of additional landscaping. So, I mean, you hear our discussion. I don't think we need to beat this.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the UHG site? Okay, hearing none. Oh, Mr. Straight.
My name's Jeff Straight, 15021 Summer Hill Drive, Eden Prairie. Mayor, council members, if you may not realize that United Health's decision to develop a campus in Eden Prairie was one of the engines that got LRT located into the Golden Triangle, and that's really commendable. I have one question, it's not all that generic to what you're discussing tonight, but recently, I think last week, the government allocated funding for the initial engineering, the real engineering for the Southwest Transit, and I was one, and also, there is strong opposition to it remaining nationally and statewide, and I would like you to ask United Health if they're on board for more lobbying for LRT in our area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have a comment for that, Mr. Spallad?
We appreciate that comment and, and the support, Mayor Terrell Lukens and members of the council. As we testified before, I have been involved in the Community Advisory Commission Council, I forget what it's called, but that CAC, for three or four years now, and we, we definitely support the LRT, the whole Southwest Line and the Central Corridor and the Iowath Line and, and so on. We like public transit, we, we like transit-oriented development. We didn't build on this site, we're not planning to build on this site just because we heard that the LRT was coming. We've owned this site for about 11 years, and we've always had an idea, a vision, to develop it to its fullest extent when the time was right, and the time is right. But LRT is a good thing for everybody along the line and close to the line or accessible to the line, whatever line it is, because it does all the right things for, for everybody. It takes cars off the road, it reduces emissions, it reduces our dependence on oil long-range, it provides for new commercial development along, along the line, in various appropriate places governed by city requirements and regulations, and it, it's smokeless. I mean, let's, let's face it, it's the best thing that we could do. We probably need three or four more, but H1 is a billion dollars plus or minus, and so it's a matter of economics. In the long run, it is the right thing. I wish I could go to Portland to see what they do and, and to Dallas to see, I've seen programs and what they do there. I, I just don't, I can't get enough of it, and we can't get enough of it. We, our, our employees, I'm sure, will really enjoy using it to get to this campus. And then, once, once they're on the Eden Prairie campus, they can use our shuttle to get to the other campuses, because that's part of the spider web that emanates from the LRT, where you access things that are not necessarily on the line, but other pieces of the community and vice versa. The community can access with public transit or ride-sharing and so on to get to the line and to the stations. Our station, obviously, is only 1 of 5 in Eden Prairie. You are blessed with having an opportunity to have probably more lines in, in your community from any single line, except maybe Minneapolis. I'm not sure about that, but, but this is a great opportunity for the city. So we, we have been lobbying, and somebody said, "When are you going to start that project?" Well, we started about six years ago. And, "When's the LRT coming?" Well, I'll tell you what, we'll be there when it does come, and we want to cut the ribbon with, with the city when it does, and so we welcome LRT, and I think we'll be a good neighbor and a good supporter throughout the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else from the audience want to address the council on the UHG site? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Yes, I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 71 acres, subject to attachment A, B, and C, and approve first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district change from rural to office on 68 acres, subject to attachment A, B, and C, and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on 68 acres into two lots and 11 outlots, subject to attachment A, B, and C, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Our second public hearing is a certificate of appropriateness at the Smith Douglas Moore Dunn Brothers. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Baron Counsel. A public hearing for a certificate of appropriateness for the Smith Douglas Moore House. You may recall, earlier in the year, we had a COA for the demolition of the shed workshop there. So tonight, we're coming back with COA for a new shed, a gazebo and expansion to our parking lot, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Jeremiah, and I think we're also going to hear from Mr. Ellis about some UCH updates on what HPC's been saying about the project and a little bit more detail about the elements of the COA.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, council members, there are really three aspects to this certificate of appropriateness. A new shed location, since the old shed needed to be torn down due to its dilapidated condition. A gazebo, which has been a desire of the existing tenant and would incorporate the bell and cupola recovered from the old shed workshop at the time of demolition, and the parking lot expansion, which would add 12 new spaces for a total of 39, including two handicap spaces near the main entrance. And a slightly earlier rendition of this plan went to HPC several weeks ago, and they approved it with certain conditions attached, and the plans were revised in part to meet those conditions, but there was also a way found to add additional parking, which is obviously very valuable to the site regardless of what the uses are over, over the term of the future. And so we did bring the proposal back through the HPC last night to make sure that it met their conditions, and they were very satisfied with the revised plan, so I wanted to make sure you are aware of that. It's very likely in the future that we'll also bring back to you an amendment to the conditional use permit and lease to revise the approved outdoor area, because the current outdoor use area sits in what's now the proposed parking lot. So I just wanted to let you know that those changes will likely be coming. I'm sure that they will want the outdoor area to include the gazebo, which it currently would not. Now, this condition, certificate of appropriateness, does not require that the parking lot actually be built in any certain timeframe or anything like that, so we would ask that you approve the certificate of appropriateness, even if you're not ready to move forward with funding the parking lot, because at least then, the design will be on the books and, and everybody will understand where we're heading with that. The shed, however, looks like it will be a collaboration of the city providing the materials and Hennepin Technical College providing the labor, and this is something that we, we always try to take advantage of. It's good for both, both parties. And the gazebo is something that they're currently working on fundraising for, so that's not looking like it's in the, the near future. So again, I would ask that you act on the certificate of appropriateness tonight, even if you are not comfortable moving forward with the parking lot at this time. However, Mr. Ellis would like to provide you with some information with regard to the current status of moving forward with the parking lot and get, you know, maybe some initial feedback on that as well. lot and get maybe some initial feedback on that as well. And with that, if you would like, I'll turn it over to Robert.
Mayor and council members, we've been working even through today on trying to squeeze in as many parking stalls as possible on this site. And at this point in time, and the plan that you would have provided before you, we'll have a total number of 42 parking spaces out there with the addition of 15 spaces with this project if it is approved tonight. And we did meet with Ann onsite. She's very pleased with the layout that you see before you. And we would be ready to begin work as early as tomorrow if it is approved tonight. So, project would likely take three to four weeks to complete, but we could finish it before the paving season ends this year. As a part of this parking lot expansion, we'd also be installing a rain garden, which would provide all the necessary stormwater quality features that you would look for in a project like this. And if you remember, this project started as a different alternative using a pervious pavement, the Percola. And as we went down that road, we found that was very costly alternative. I believe it was in the neighborhood of about $130,000 to do that expansion. And in my mind, that seemed a little bit high for what we were gaining. So, we collected ourselves and looked at internally what would be a more economical way of completing this. And the layout that you see before you would actually be about a $50,000 improvement, so considerably more affordable than the Percola option. And it does provide the same level of stormwater quality treatment that you would see in the Percola. So, there is no trade-off for an environmental quality that you're looking for in this project. So, our recommendation is to move forward with this layout that you do see. Again, it does provide 15 additional spaces. The map may show 16, but we felt that that may be possible, more likely 15 due to a small drainage issue where we had some ponding water. We didn't want to create an icing situation where parkers would step out of their vehicle and slide on some ice. So, we did eliminate one stall. It's actually going to be 15 new stalls, total of 42 stalls altogether, which will greatly improve access to and out of the site. So, very comfortable moving forward with this proposal. We do have a funding package put together to cover the cost of this improvement.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nelson.
You did say something about the coming in and out of the parking lot. So, there will be more turn, right now, there's almost zero turnaround space. And this will allow for people to come in and go out in a manner without trying to jam up all the people behind them by turning around at the end when they couldn't find a spot to park, right?
That is correct. And in fact, we've designed it so that when the refuse trucks come in to haul the garbage away, it will even accommodate them circulating through, loading the garbage without having to drive in and back out of the site. So, yes, it'll be much more circular in nature, which I'm sure the public will enjoy.
Yes.
Councilmember Wickstrom.
Yeah, I just have a question. The two trees that are going to be removed, those are, what trees are those?
I am not sure that I could answer that question. I do know that we are replacing one for one on the trees. So, we will be replacing everything that does need to be removed.
What's a significant tree loss, two trees?
It's a box elder. There's a talpa, but I think that's a box elder there.
So, they're not historic? They're not anything we need to worry about?
No, this is a weed tree that grew up right next to the shed.
Barkicry or something like that?
It's a weed tree that grew up right next to the shed, and it grew up after Earl's time.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Okay. Councilmember Aho.
In terms of the lease agreement, if we expand the parking, have we looked at what our current lease is and what maybe future lease would be rate in terms of additional parking?
We have had discussions with the current tenant with regard to potential revision to the lease. And if there is additional income generated based on the additional parking, that we would split that income. We would actually look at their revenue, and if there's revenue enhancement, that we would get a portion of that, most likely 50%.
Thank you.
Councilmember Case.
There's precedent for us doing this kind of expansion on property that we own and we lease out, correct? I mean, I know that with the liquor store, Cub Food, or Den Road project, I know it was part of lease payments to redo that section, but is that correct? When we, I forget how the funding mechanism worked for that, but my sense is that we had a contribution from the city.
On Den Road?
Yeah, on the new rental property to the west side of our liquor store?
Oh.
I think, I guess my point is, I think we can, I think this is not out of the ordinary for us to improve property, not for the current tenant necessarily, but for the viability of the property. And I'm pretty sure that we continue to maintain the garden room to make sure that it stays viable, and yet, we have a tenant in there. So, my point is, this seems very reasonable to me that we would be doing this to make this property more viable for whoever is in there five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road. Now, I don't see in tonight's agenda, is there a place that we would approve? Or does it not need to be approved for the actual funding of the parking lot?
Mayor, councilmember Case, with regard to your previous point, yes, with regard to any of our leased spaces, we generally have to get involved in putting some money into the buildings or into the property in general to accommodate changes in the tenant or just, you know, basically to make it possible to lease the space. So, that is not unusual. But I would also agree that this isn't really for the existing tenant. It's for the property in general, and it would benefit any kind of city use or city activities on the property as well as the current tenant. But to the extent that it does benefit the current tenant, we would like to see some of that profit. And with regard to your second question, I think Robert would like to speak to that.
Yes, Mayor, council. I don't believe that council approval of the funding is required. I just wanted to make that known to the council for, more for information purposes.
I support that. I guess I need, want you to know that.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the Smith Douglas Moore? Yes.
Again, Mayor, council members, staff. My name's Jeff Straight, 15021 Summer Hill Drive. And I came here tonight. I never thought I'd hear the phrase Edenville mitigation credits mentioned again. We first heard about them about 15 years ago, and that had to do with the Clenchire Outlot situation, which we were able to save from development with wetland mitigation. It was a great solution to a very sticky problem. Earlier this evening, I was with you in the workshop with the Urban Institute. And I go to these things. Sherry would testify to that. I think we were the only regular citizens going to council meetings about, what, 20 years ago now? And I still go to them because I'm fascinated with this stuff. And I care about the city and, of course, the metro area. One of the items, one of the speakers at that workshop mentioned the fact that we have to come up with solutions that involve more private sector and public sector sharing. And I'm looking at the parking lot at the Dunn Brothers things. You know, I've been looking at other parking lots over the last couple of months, but this one especially. Someone talked about this afternoon, shared parking. I had coffee over there with a couple of people from Minnetonka, several Eden Prairie residents last week, and we looked at the area where the shed has been removed from and that possibly a big, long, big yard. And then, we walked over and looked down at the funeral home parking lot. That's very, very close to that. There is a path, a Witschip path now, that serves visitors there. And I would encourage this council to revisit that in view of what we need to do as a city in this new times, these new times. I know that an official of the local environmental agency has talked with the owner of that funeral home, and he would be more than willing to talk with the city about sharing that parking lot. And of course, there are a whole bunch of issues involved with it, but I think you ought to look at that. I don't think we need more parking lots in Eden Prairie, especially in a place as lovely as that Dunn Brothers Coffee House. I, you know, I respect all the thinking and planning that is gone, but we've got to do what the Urban Institute people were recommending today, is kind of think out of the box where we are. I think this is an opportunity for that. If you go ahead with a normal parking lot without the pervious pavement, I'm unclear as to how runoff from that will be treated. Will that be an additional rainwater garden? And also, I recommend highly that the staff talk with Nine Mile Creek Watershed District because they have been doing maybe the most extensive studies in the country right now, in the world, about carp and how phosphorus is generated. Where does it come from? Does it come from offsite? Or is it generated right in the lakes? Many of those managers, some are fighting one another over this, but the science says that maybe a pervious pavement is not really needed. Maybe a rain garden that far away from standing water, a pond or a lake or a stream, may not do any good. So, I, that's all I have to say tonight. So, I do urge the staff to contact those studies, and they may have already, but there is controversy about these findings. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis, do you want to address the rainwater garden?
Yes, thank you. The, there's an existing rain garden on site now, and that provides a stormwater treatment for the existing surfacing that we have. With this proposal, we'll be installing a new rain garden, which will treat the stormwater for the additional impervious that's being installed. So, that will provide the stormwater quality. As far as the phosphorus study is concerned, we are actually working with Nine Mile on that study. We'll probably be a funding partner for that. So, we are hand in hand, looking at the nutrients. Where do they come from? What are the causes? What can we do to remedy that? So, it is something that is on our radar. And then, one final thing, I just wanted to clear up on the funding of the parking lot expansion. We'll be doing that with our internal forces, and we will not be contracting. You will not see a formal construction contract come through council for approval. So, that's why you don't necessarily need to approve any type of a contract tonight. We'll be doing that with our own forces.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Wickstrom.
Mr. Straight, you bring up a good point. And I remember being on the HPC when we were actually looking at adaptive reuse on the Smith Douglas Moore House. Oh, I don't even know how many years ago it was. And we actually did have the conversation about sharing the parking lot with the funeral home next door. And they were amenable to it if the parking lot was not being used. And of course, they're a business, I guess, a service business, and they do have activity there. And I think the other situation with the parking lot, because I have actually used that parking lot when it's been full at the Dunn Brothers, the top parking lot. The other issue was that it wasn't, you know, you have to walk down that little hill, so it's not ADA approved to have an expansion of the parking lot be a shared parking lot. So, and I think that that's the situation with this one, is that it is ADA approved. So, that's one situation. Yeah, because that is a hill that you have to go down in order to, but I think it's a, you know, it's a good idea when possible to use it. It's just that it wasn't always available, and that was the situation.
Councilmember Case.
And just to assure Mr. Straight that government is trying hard and looking at all possibilities. Also, I want to go one step further and assure you that the current tenant at Dunn Brothers did have an agreement with the funeral home, and they actually had parking there formally. And their problems developed, and it was impossible to continue their relationship. So, it has been tried. For reasons, it didn't work, and then now we're looking at this option. So, we do really pursue all different possibilities, and that was a good idea. So, it continues to be a good idea. It just didn't work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's many reasons to expand this. One is just the safety of getting cars in and out, which isn't there right now. It can be very difficult in a busy time, and especially with a large vehicle, all trying to get into a spot where there's none. People line the driveway, everything else. We clearly need more parking just for the safety of, you know, people coming in, out, walking, small children, whatever. And I would certainly like to see it expanded this fall. So, you know, I would say the sooner the better, actually. I'd hate to go through another winter season with lots of snow, trying to pile the snow up and then get cars in and out like we did last winter. It was very difficult some days, some weeks, maybe some month, actually, if I remember last winter, but.
You know, it's interesting that this is on the agenda after we had this workshop with ULI tonight because one of the things that they talked about is in terms of our viability, our sustainability, our attractiveness as a community, having gathering places and public meeting rooms like this. It's exactly what they're talking about.
Is there a motion?
I thought I'd asked. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak? Okay.
I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt the findings of fact and approve certificate of appropriateness 2011-02-032 for the Dunn Brothers Coffee Store Site Improvements Plan, new shed, gazebo, and parking expansion.
Second. Any discussion? And again, these are approving plans for the shed and gazebo, not approving funding.
Though, funding doesn't need to be approved.
Well, for the parking, it doesn't.
Correct.
Right. Okay. All in favor of motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Payment of claims.
Move approval.
I'm sorry.
Did I say that right?
Yeah, you did.
You caught me off guard with the silence.
Is there a second?
Second, yes.
Roll call, please. Or any items to question on the payment plans? Okay.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens.
Aye.
Brings us to reports, first reports of council members. And in the paper in the last week, we've seen long articles about three basically invasive species coming in, zebra mussels, those big, huge flying carp that are flying out of the river and killing people, and emerald ashbore. There was a big article on that. And I was wondering if we could get some kind of report maybe from Mr. Fox about, I don't think we have to worry about the carp, but about emerald ashbore and what we are doing as a city, what the situation is in terms of the invasiveness of the ashbore in our city.
Absolutely. Mayor, council members, we can provide more information for you. We do have some on the website that we've been giving guidance to people, Department of Agriculture. One that I would bring up as well, that I think we should give you a little more background on, is the Japanese beetle. And you're going to be, you have seen it probably. There's some little white bags hanging from a lot of people's trees that have collected them. But what's happening now is they've gone into the grub stage. They go from a beetle to a grub, and the grub is where it's fairly harmful to people with manicured lawns or people like us that have manicured athletic fields. If you go by Crestwood Park right now, there's a soccer field over there that we are going to be treating pretty heavily for grubs because the grubs are eating at the root system. And it also ends up attracting some animals that then like to eat grubs that end up tearing up the ground and things. And so, I think people are going to notice this in their yards as well. The grubs happen to like nice manicured bluegrass. So, if you have more native plants in your yard, you won't probably see them as much. But, so, it's about to kind of rear its ugly head in a lot of people's lawns. And so, I suspect we might be hearing a little bit more about that, and we can give some guidance what people should do. But as you read in the article about the emerald ashbore, there's many different approaches depending on how close you are to the infestation or if it's hit your city. And so, we can give you a little update. Thankfully, it's not here at this time, and our reaction has been kind of a stay the course, not to be aggressive at this point as far as spending dollars to treat, which has a short treatment time. I think we read about one city who recently spent about $50,000 that will treat a few of their trees, but only works for about three years, and then you have to do it again. So, there's some approaches where cities are currently harvesting and doing a little bit of replanting. That's not something that we have been really proposing here or a proponent of because the trees are still good. So, it's hard for us to recommend cutting down, you know, large, very good shade trees before their time when it's not here yet, when it takes several years for that to take them down. If people want to be kind of proactive, they may choose a spot in their lawn to plant a different tree, a different species of tree sooner with the anticipation that maybe they'll lose that other one. But we'll provide a little more information and some handouts. Department of Agriculture has done a nice job of keeping people informed. But, you know, like the science of some of the stormwater, this is a new phenomenon, and it's always, you know, it's happened in other places in the country at different climates, and climate makes a large difference. And so, even the experts are still kind of in a wait and see, and wouldn't- And so even the experts are still kind of in a wait and see, and wouldn't go too far out on a limb to project where this might be in two, three, or four years. And so we'll definitely give you a little more information. But I want to, I think we should give it to you both for the Japanese beetle, as well as the Dutch elm, because although the Japanese beetle hasn't received as much attention, I think people are going to be seeing it right in their own, what was a nicely manicured yard.
Good way to slip in a pun there, going out on a limb.
You caught that.
I caught that. I caught that. Emerald ashbore, we've been hearing about it for a while. Have we, did we initially, or right away, start discouraging developers from putting in ash when they were doing tree replacement plans?
I would ask Ms. Jeremiah if she knows the answer to that on our, on our tree species list, I guess, the timing. I can't tell you the timing of when that would have happened.
Mayor, we have always asked people to stay away from monocultures and to use a diversity of plant material, because you never know what the next disease is going to be. I don't think that we have said you can't use it at all, but we are seeing people just naturally staying away from it for the most part. So that's something we could maybe discuss and bring back to you with regard to more details.
People are probably just not going to do it because of the problems.
You know, today I was going to a couple parks with a park maintenance supervisor, and him and I started talking about the article that was in the paper. And one of the things that we said and referred to is that luckily in Eden Prairie, we don't have a lot of mass stands of monocultures. And so if it was a decimation of aspen, or a decimation of oak will, it kind of goes, it kind of cleans out the forest a little bit. It doesn't take down a whole hillside. There would still be oak, and there would still be aspen, and, you know, so the ash trees to us, although if it was a major infestation, we're talking about something similar to a Dutch elm disease. It doesn't happen all at once. It can happen over time. We don't know how fast that will happen, if it's in a five, 10. But think of Dutch elm disease. We're still working with that, and that started in the 1970s. So we still have elm trees that have been surviving this long, and there's still many elm trees in the city. So that, that's kind of another way to think about it. This is not where we're going to lose, you know, whole hillsides or, or whole forests full of trees. Our trees are fairly well diversified in the type of species that we have. But certainly if it did hit us, like it has in other places, the cleanup effort and the amount of time and energy that would go into having to remove and cut would be probably more significant than what we've seen with just the Dutch elm that we've been working with.
All right. Thank you. And then, Councilmember Case.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, council, for allowing me just an insert here in the agenda, because I wasn't here at the very beginning, so if that's your pleasure, I would just continue on. Over the last couple of weeks, and actually probably goes back several months, I've just had occasion to be in conversations with various people, really from diverse groups across the city, that just have expressed, on some level, a disconnect from government, or disconnect from being heard or listened to. And, you know, you think about that, anybody could come to any of our meetings at any time, and the Weisners do. You know, certainly can call us, they can email, and people do occasionally if there's an issue or a problem, but, and yet, so many times, they'll, just in a generalized venting way, just feel like, I just can't be heard, I'm not being listened to. And I just thought, back, I don't know how many years ago, we had various forums where we actually went out to different places. I remember one at an elementary school, we went to, I think, the library one time. So I thought, and this would be open to all of you, and really, it's just a suggestion to think about, but would it not be a good idea, and maybe we can't start at 2011 because we're toward the end here, but across 2012's schedule, three or four, possibly on a non-Tuesday, or possibly on a Tuesday, but forum occasions where we would intentionally invite various groups. So even though we have connections to the chamber and business communities, and we do our meet and greets, which are incredible, actually make an effort to mail out to the 2,000 businesses and say, we are going to have a listening session, where we just want you to come in and talk to us, and tell us your perception of Eden Prairie, of what you think's going well, what's not. We could have a forum where we invited in seniors, because I know I've talked to several senior citizens that on different occasions have felt disconnected based on just whatever decisions we're making. Granted, they could come at any meeting time here, but they don't. But if we had a special occasion, maybe at the senior center, where we had a forum, and it's more of a listening, open communication, the immigrant community. I know that in many cases, they feel very disconnected, partly because they just don't understand the systems, or how they work, or how to connect in with us. And then I thought, if we got into this, and if you all came up with other ideas, too, we have this whole, kind of what we talked about tonight, this futuristic planning of how do we look at our communities as we go down the road, knowing that we're in a change with our tax base, with the whole system out there in America, possibly, of taxation looking differently, and what does that mean to maintain quality? So maybe we sponsor a community forum to come in and talk to us about, you know, what that looks like, or... So that was my thought, was just to, to maybe actually do an intentional reach out across the year 2012 on specific issues, and we make a real effort to invite various community groups, and let it be their time. And we mainly listen to their issues and concerns, and also, if we can, communicate back, have the appropriate staff here. So I kind of wanted to throw it out and see what you all thought.
Comments from council?
Yeah, I think it would probably, you know, be a good idea. There should be, you know, a timeline, you know, that we're not going to be there for six hours, but, you know, that, you know, we'll be there for two hours, or whatever it is, and sort of open. But, yeah, I think you can, three might be, you know, once, you know, every four months might be a good format, and probably we are getting a little close to the end of the year here. But, and I think if you're doing a senior one, it's an excellent idea to do at the, at the senior center, and a business one, certainly somewhere in the business community. And immigrants live in all parts of the city, so we'd simply have to find a suitable venue. But I think, you know, at least a try. Now, if we end up getting three people coming, maybe we'll have to revisit the idea. But to do those three, you know, every so many months, and it wouldn't have to be a Tuesday, but it, it should be a day scheduled far enough in advance that at least most of the council members could attend. I know it's sometimes hard for us to find a date off the standard schedule that most of us can, but, so it would, I would assume, have to be scheduled a ways in advance. And, or even put one Tuesday that we don't meet in the summer for a regular council meeting as one of those meetings, perhaps. But I would encourage staff to try to give us a couple of months heads up, so that can hit our calendars, because I think it's important, if we're going to do it, that we all be there.
Yes. Councilmember Wixstrom.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea in terms of civic engagement, and that we're going out. We've done it before, and it has been a good idea. I think three might be too many, though. I'm thinking maybe two would be better, and I agree with you, doing something in the summer. And maybe there is a focus and an agenda. I like the idea of businesses, too, because I think they want to make sure that they get heard by us. And the meet and greets is one way, but in our, through our economic development director is another. But I would like to hear really more closely from businesses, as well as just the general population. I like the idea.
Yeah, I like the idea, too, especially after talking with ULI tonight, and they talked about going into the, to use the trite phrase, again, the new normal, and they kind of highlighted really three areas in which we're changing. We're changing economically, in terms of jobs and business development. We're changing in terms of the diversity of our community, and the aging of our community. Those were three, the three things they highlighted tonight. So this just seems to fit perfectly. Get that dialogue going. How are we going to make that transition? Because it will involve a change from the way we have been doing business.
I would be in favor of doing, in doing it as well. I just, I think doing the format where we did in the past, where we had some meetings offsite, you know, regularly scheduled meetings, that was not quite as smooth. And I, I think just a forum, you know, where we have an intent, purpose, would be better. I think it would get people out, and, and they'd have a reason to come and talk to us, and, and I think that's a better focus. I do like that.
All right. I'll talk with Mr. Getchell, and we'll see what we can get.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Getchell, report of the city manager.
Mayor, council, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the Airport Advisory Commission last week. I think you're probably aware, through some emails that you've been getting, and some calls, and that city staff has, in terms of some complaints on airport noise. And specifically, in this case, helicopter airport noise, we've seen quite a spike in the number of complaints. So the chair of the commission asked to put a major focus at last week's meeting on those complaints, bringing in some people that had concerns with the noise. We also sought out some people that were willing to come in and sit down with the commission who've had more complaints than any over the last few years, just to get a feel for their thoughts on airport noise. And we found that there may be some issues with where the helicopter operations are, or the training operations are, and where the activity is, and that there was some activity that may have been over residential property, and not necessarily in a designated area. So the commission's working with the, with MAC and the FAA, and they're going to focus their November meeting on that particular issue. So if you or anybody hears any concerns about the helicopter issue, yes, there was a spike in that training, maybe some issues with locations and altitudes, and we're going to jump into it and see what we can do to alleviate those problems.
Councilmember Case.
Three of us live within the range here of, of the helicopters. And I think Nancy and I are the closest probably to the, to the circle they make, they make. And the other day, I was out painting in my backyard, and I don't often really pay attention for those people to know where I live. I'm kind of in the eye of it, so I really don't get, I don't think the impacts that people get on the ends of runways. But this particular helicopter would come around and go up Pioneer Trail, and you can tell by heights of trees, a good guess, and they were 100, 150 feet up, whipping right up Pioneer Trail to make the circle again. So that has to be in violation, because I think they have to be going out over a certain point and getting up to, well, planes have to get to 500, so I'm not sure. So I don't know exactly the rules. My point is, big problem, and, and so if I was sensing it, I mean, you think about the thousands of people that are getting that daily, or 10 times an hour, I mean, the thing was circling around. So I'm really glad to hear that something's going to be, at least looked at. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Jeremiah, social service funding.
Mayor and council members, we are asking you tonight to approve the funding recommendations made by the Human Service Review Committee for Social Service Providers for 2012 and 2013. And just a reminder, and for our listeners, these are not grants, but contracts for services to Eden Prairie residents. And the amount of city funding is generally a small portion of the overall cost of the services to our residents, so these funds actually leverage funding from other sources as well. And the Human Service Review Committee is an interdepartmental staff committee, so we have staff from police, fire, park, and rec, as well as the community development department, different divisions, looking at these proposals. We interview every applicant, and we also look very closely at the return on investment, and monitor them throughout the year to make sure that they are, in fact, providing the services before they get any of the funding. And this year, we are proposing to fund PROP for $62,000. And again, these are the two-year totals, so it would be $31,000 a year. Teens alone for $26,000. Storefront is not recommended for funding this year. Family and children's services did not apply. YMCA is recommended for $50,000. Meals on Wheels for $18,800. Senior Community Services for $60,000. Hennebun South Services Collaborative, $49,262, that's what they asked for. Family Center Plus, $28,000. New American Academy, a new applicant this year, $10,000. Southwest Transit, also a new applicant, $4,800. Home Line, which was formerly, formerly funded through CDBG, $10,000. And Emerging Needs, which is something that we have had in the past, but haven't had since 2008, $1,138, just to allow some funding in that department for needs that are currently unforeseen, but tend to pop up over the course of the year. So a total of $320,000 of the two-year period, $160,000 a year. Just to give you a little bit of background into the HSRC's thinking with regard to this, if anyone asked for more than they had received in 2010, 2011, we dialed them back to the same funding that they got in the last cycle. Meals on Wheels was taken over by PROP this year, and they've actually, it seems like there's some cost efficiencies there, because they actually found that the, the program costs less than, than we've needed in the past. And some of them, we have recommended some conditions be placed on the funding. That's kind of new, but just based on the particular circumstances. New American Academy asked for the money initially for salaries, but what they currently have are volunteers, and we noted that they're having trouble keeping up with their lease provisions, so we would suggest that, that the condition allocate the funds towards their rent, and we hope that their volunteers will continue to volunteer. They also have to file with the Attorney General, and that shouldn't be any problem for them. And YMCA, we're asking that they keep their activity dollars in Eden Prairie. We did notice when they, when we're reviewing the invoices, that they're sometimes taking our residents, our children, out to Shakopee and, and other cities, and doing activities outside of the city, whereas we feel that we have wonderful venues within the city. They could be taking them to the airport, or we have TV and radio stations, the college, HTC, the community center. There's just so many opportunities here in Eden Prairie, that we really think that they should make our, our students aware of all the wonderful opportunities in our community, and keep those, those dollars here. So those are the proposals and the conditions, and I'll certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Jeremiah? Councilmember Case.
Yes, I'm not questioning at all the process, because I trust very much that you've studied it in, in detail, on a level, really, that we don't. I just have a question with the YMCA. Am I correct in remembering that this year, the school district took over their morning and afternoon program? And so this money is going towards what? And then is the need the same if they're not running the same program with our students anymore?
Mayor and councilmember Case, that's a really good question. The YMCA childcare program was actually funded through the CDBG funds. This is the youth leadership program, so they take kind of troubled kids that are recommended by the school district, and try to engage them in leadership activities. And so it's a, it's a different program. But we do expect we'll probably see the school district applying for the CDBG funds for the childcare, because those are for low-income residents.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Wixstrom.
This is a process that I have been involved with in the past, and I so support it, and I am so appreciative that you do continuous improvement on it. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I do have one question, and that is the Southwest Transit. I hadn't seen that they had been funded before. What, what is that for?
Your Honor and Councilmember Butcher-Wixstrom, that is actually for the, what we call the shopping bus. I think they call it the circulator. And what has happened with that is because of the costs of fuel and the additional labor that's involved, this is mostly a senior operation, and so there's a lot more time taken with the driver, getting folks on and off the bus, and waiting for them at stores, and that kind of thing, that the costs of that have gone up. And so the subsidy ratio has become kind of marginal with regard to them being able to continue that program. And so we looked very, very closely at that. They did ask us to fund 50% of it. We are recommending that we fund 10%. We do believe that'll get their subsidy back in range. We're also working with them. We understand that they did a study a year or two ago, and they could potentially raise their fares for this, and it seems like it's acceptable to the seniors who are using it. So we, we're suggesting that they also look at raising the fares as another way of getting that subsidy ratio back in kind of the moderate range.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we, we need to take them action on that?
We do.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the funding recommendations made by the Human Services Review Committee for Social Service Providers for 2012 and 2013.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brings us to the end of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.